Been waiting for. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience, those who are left. Please remember to bring back your sign that you paid a fifty dollar deposit on, to place in front of your properties. Sometimes they're in short supply. So, we will begin this meeting. And when is, and I apologize, I do not have my sheet that says when the county commission meets, when they're appealed. I know everything takes place five days from now. But the next county commission meeting, should anything be appealed, is when?
July eighteenth.
July eighteenth.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I call this regular meeting of the Minnetonka County Planning Commission to order. We have a... Okay, any, we will have the consent agenda as well as the regular agenda items. Any action taken tonight, on a conditional use permit will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of tonight's meeting is filed in the county planning office by Monday, July third at five o'clock. In event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission on July twenty-third. And that meeting writes, it means here, on or about nine o'clock in the morning. Okay. July eighteenth. July eighteenth, excuse me. Okay. Here's the dates. Okay, so, I will first read the consent agenda. Anyone who's, if the commission members, at this time, do you have any objection to any item on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would like to review items two and three.
Two and three, because of the size, probably.
Sure.
Okay, so you want those to be presented? They'll be moved to the regular agenda, items two and three. And then, any other items? If not, I will read the other items, which will include the minutes of May twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen. So, two and three are being moved to the regular agenda. So, you go to item number four, which is a conditional use permit, seventeen forty-two, to allow the reconstruction and non, of a non-conforming off-premise sign. And this is the Baltic FFA. And the property owner is David Wylen, this is a half mile east of Baltic. Okay, any of the audience object to that motion at all? Okay, the next one is item number five, conditional use permit fourteen, seventeen forty-three, to exceed twelve hundred square feet of building area requesting fourteen hundred and forty. Jeff Martins is the petitioner, it's approximately five and a half miles south of Hartford. Okay, so those two items are on the consent agenda along with the minutes. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Second. Okay, a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, so item four and five, you are free to go. Thank you for your patience. Unless the FFA boys want to make a presentation.
For Steve.
You're all right with that? Okay. Okay, so now we will move, do we need, we need a motion to approve the regular agenda, correct?
Second.
Items two and three. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. And the first presenter will be item number two.
Still discussing.
Yes.
All right.
This is conditional use permit seventeen forty, to allow requesting ten thousand five hundred and fifty-four square feet.
Is that the sighting they're going to use? Scott, well, David's looking, do the FFA guys need to get a permit? And what's the cost going to be them to be permitted?
Well, they have to get a building permit, and it's considered a commercial building permit, so it's one percent. And the minimum is a hundred dollars, which is probably what they would get for a sign for that side.
It's basically a billboard. To pop it out of the ground and float it down river, then?
That's fifty bucks.
Fifty bucks?
For one hundred dollars to make that.
All right, thank you, David.
So, David Heinold, Minnetonka County Planning Department. Item two, sorry, so, conditional use permit seventeen dash forty, forty, is to exceed twelve hundred square feet of total accessory building area. This is a request of ten thousand five hundred and fifty-four. The, so, this property is located just south of Valley Springs in the southern tip, just off of Dunham Street. If you go straight south, it's about an eighth of a mile down the way. Or just to the south along that road. The site plan, as you can see here, the existing building, this is seven thousand three hundred and fourteen square feet. And the site plan shows, in addition to that building, of fifty-four by sixty. So, onto the north side of the building towards, there's an existing tree grove. Couple or few rows of trees there along the north and west sides of the property boundaries. And this is the driveway that leads to the buil, straight to the building. So, I took a couple of pictures of the, the site itself. Actually, before I get into that, just going through some of the properties in the vicinity, about the accessory building sizes in the area. Immediately to the east, if you go down, if you continue around the curve, going east towards this property right here, it's located about an eighth of a mile to the east, has four thousand three hundred and twenty square feet on roughly twelve acre parcel, or twelve acres. Comparison, the petitioner's property, the subject property, is about a little, about eight acres. And in, in the same instance, the, the property that is on the south side of the road, as you can see here, it's a smaller property on half the size of what the petitioner is, is about a three and a half acre parcel, has three thousand one hundred and fifty-six square feet of accessory building area. So, just going through some of the pictures that I took of the, the petitioner's building, as you can see the white building in the background. And the addition would be to the north of that, towards that tree grove. This is just, this is a closer up picture. There's also a building in the background that originally wasn't accounted for in the application, but was included, so the request jumped up to the ten thousand five hundred and fifty-four square feet with the proposed addition. And there's also a building back here, that's a, I believe, a three-sided or a barn in the background. This is that building that you saw to the east, about an eighth of a mile down the road. It, similar type building, looks like a barn. The petitioner's intended use for their building would be an indoor horse riding arena as well as for personal enjoyment. And this is that building just to the east. And this is the one on the south side of the road, smaller size, it's also on a s, half as big of a lot as the petitioner's property. This building is located in the front area to that, the property, or north of the house. And this is another building that's located on that, on that same lot, that's just off to the back of the lot. Some of the criteria that we go through with conditional use permits. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for uses already permitted, and upon property values in the surrounding area. There's several buildings within a half mile that are comparable to the size, they're approaching that, the size of what the petitioner's requesting. One of the properties in one building has over four thousand square feet of accessory building area, and that's the only building that's on that property, the first picture I showed. It's unlikely that the proposed building size with the, the amount of screening around the property with the trees, that it would have a detrimental effect on property values in the immediate vicinity with the buildings that are already there. The proposed building would be used for the, the property owner's personal storage and use for horseback riding. The area is primarily agricultural around it to the north and west, and then Valley Springs is about a quarter mile to the north. There's a pretty good separation. I thought I had a picture of that, just showing the hillside in there. But there's a, a pretty good, it drops straight down into Valley Springs, this is located up higher on a hill. And in addition to that, there's also a cemetery that's located across the street from the petitioner's property. Two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. This building can only be used for personal residential storage, or personal use for horseback riding, there's no commercial or business related activities, or tournaments, or anything like that. The, given the size of the other larger accessory buildings, ten thousand five hundred and fifty-four square feet of accessory building area would be congruent with the land composition with the area that's primarily agricultural and vacant land there, with a few residential acreages. Three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The, the driveway is already there for access to the building. The building is in addition on the north side. There's no other further infrastructure that needs to be provided from the, the application. Four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. There, with a personal, personal use and storage with this proposed building, there is no need for off-street parking with a supplemental area that is on-site for the property owner's own vehicles. No commercial or business parking is allowed at any time, as well as with the use. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted, lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. There's no offensive nuisance that are permitted at any time during the operation of this, this building. And lighting should be projected downward onto the property in order to prevent light spillage. Six, the health, safety, general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. The proposed use of the building, as the petitioner stated, for an indoor riding arena should have no effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The use of this building for private use and storage will create few problems to adjacent property owners with the two residential acreages and the surrounding agricultural land, and as well as the cemetery that's just across the street. The subject property is located just outside of the transition area. Backing up to the map, is located on the north side of the shelter belt for the property. So, you can look here, north side, transition area is to the north of this. This is the, is located outside of that, it's in the agricultural production area. And this is identified in the Envision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, which sets the primary purpose of maintaining the rural landscape until eventual development of residential and/or municipal development. And goal two, action two point four of the Envision twenty thirty comprehensive plan recommends supporting growth that is compatible to adopted municipal comprehensive plans. In going through, the subject property is located on the edge of the city of Valley Springs growth area. In going through and highlighting the Valley Springs Comprehensive Plan twenty thirty-five, their future land use plan identifies the area as commercial. Within the immediate area to the north and west is low, low-density residential, so you're looking basically red, and then yellow around that is what's in the comprehensive plan. Which, section nine of that plan, the Valley Springs Comprehensive Plan states it will be necessary to ensure that all proposed development is serviceable with municipal utilities, which is based on the ability to provide those sort of water and sewer during the planning period. Staff finds that the requested total accessory building size is relatively comparable to the existing accessory buildings in the immediate vicinity. So, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit seventeen dash forty with the following conditions. One, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed ten thousand five hundred and fifty-four square feet. Two, that the accessory building shall not exceed thirty-five feet in height. Three, that the building shall be an accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot. Four, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building at any time, and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed at any time. Five, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded, designed to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. And that six, that a building permit is required prior to construction of the accessory building. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Questions to David?
David, so is the building, the proposed addition, a hundred and twenty feet from the north border and a hundred and seventy-two from the west border, is that what you calculate?
Yeah, the site plan looks like it shows a hundred and twenty feet from the north property line and a hundred and seventy-two from the west.
Both of those are wooded boundaries, basically?
There are trees.
Okay, any other questions? Now, will the petitioner come forward? Thank you, David. Just state your name and address, please.
Sadie Dean, nine eleven Dunham Street, Valley Springs, South Dakota.
Okay, you have questions of the petitioner?
I guess I have one.
Yeah.
Or maybe a couple in here. How many horses do you envision having in the?
We have four, and we're hoping to get down to three. We have one extra that we don't need right now.
Okay, other questions? I have just a quick one up in the, what is the other big building used for?
Oh, that's where we store all of our hay, that's where they're able to get out of the weather, and then we have some, you know, lawn mowers and snow plow and stuff like that.
Cause I was looking at that green circle, I was trying to figure out what that was.
Oh, that's our outdoor riding arena, that's just all sand to ride on.
That's what that is.
Yep.
Other questions, petitioner?
Mr. Chair, just philosophically, and this is for us, you know, this is right on the edge of the small community of Valley Springs. Obviously, with Sioux Falls, we have, you know, a mile consideration. Do you feel that there's any conflict with the, the community there, that you having this riding stable and stuff?
No, there's a few right on the edge of the town, on the north side, on the east side, and then, are, really, you can't see the building with the shelter belt so thick.
Oh, you can't.
Not from town.
Any other questions, the petitioner? If not, thank you, Sadie.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Motion?
Any, any opponents?
Any opponents, anyone else care to address this issue?
Seeing that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We do this every month, feel free to come back.
Okay, we go to item number three, visitor four. The next big building, three.
David Heinold, Planning Department. So, conditional use permit fourteen dash forty-one is to exceed twelve hundred square feet of total accessory building area. This is a request of nine thousand five seventy-four. The, the property is located two five seven six four Packard Lane. It's located basically in the north, kind of the northwest side of the development that's just located off the two fifty-eighth street of the county highway. As you can see, the, just before you get to the river. This property is one of the larger properties in the, in the subdivision that encompasses a little over eight acres, eight point two-two. The, the site plan shows a building, so the white building right here is, there was a building there which has been removed from the property. And as you'll see in some of the pictures, that is, it's a basketball court. The, so, the, the existing plan itself shows an existing building square footage of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four square feet width. As, as I mentioned, that building has been removed from the property. It was a twenty by thirty machine shed. And the petitioner is, is requesting the additional size up to nine thousand five seventy-four to build a thirty by forty-eight post-frame structure on that lot in that, in that same location where that building that plans, or has been removed from the property. Just real quick, going through some of the buildings in the area, there are, I mean, there's, there's several accessory building sizes in the surrounding area, ranging from five hundred and twenty-eight square feet to two thousand one hundred and sixty square feet. And a majority of the, the properties that were selected were located within the, the same subdivision and along the county highway to the southwest. One of the larger, one of the larger sizes is just over three thousand two hundred and seventy-eight square feet. And it's located about a little less than a half mile away from this, where this property is located. Other properties in the area, there's a few buildings that are located there. So, the two thousand one hundred and sixty square feet is located to the south. This is, it's located within a farmstead area, but there are a group of lots that are located within that, the, the shared driveway just off the highway to the south of where this, the development is, the subdivision, where the property is located. So, for a comparison, the, so the, the highest existing, or the highest size, three hundred, three thousand two, two hundred and seventy-eight square feet, is located in a parcel similar to what the petitioner has, and the property's acreage is three point, or eight point three five acres. And that's the property that's over here, about a half mile away. Some of, so, going through, I'll go through some of the pictures that I took on-site. This is the, the basketball court area where the existing building was. This is the, the house with the attached garage. Moving forward, this is a building that's located, a bigger building that's located the rear, or the north of the lot. And this building is located along the driveway as you're going to the house, and towards the back. And this is another, one of the buildings that's also included. Again, this is the same, it's also included in the square footage, and an additional building this is included with the, the request, requested size. And then, this is the, one of the last buildings that's included with that. So, it's a total of about fi, or about five buildings that are included with the square footage that is being requested. This is just a view from Packard Lane, so you can see, all you can see is the two buildings that, the last two buildings that you saw in those pictures. Going through some of the, the buildings, and this is, we're going all the way around Packard Lane, so if you just follow all the way around to, back around to the county highway, it wraps around again, so, some of the detached garages that you see in the subdivision, and all of these are on s, smaller lot sizes, about, about one to two acre lot sizes. This is that subdivision that was located to the southwest of the Packard Lane subdivision. And this is that same, same subdivision, just a different lot. And this is, again, the same subdivision, this is on the other side of the street. And that's the ones I have. So, just going through the conditional use permit criteria, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses that are already permitted upon property values in the immediate vicinity. The buildings that are within a half mile of the, the subject property, according to lot sizes, relatively, they're similar building sizes, according to what the petitioner is requesting with the thirty by forty-eight building. If you see, the other buildings are really this, roughly the same size. The proposed building is for the, the owner's personal storage. The area is primarily residential, it has over, over fifty single-family dwellings in just the immediate area. Two, that the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement upon surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. Majority of the area is, is, is already developed with residential, except to the west, there, there is still agricultural land, forty or fifty acres, directly to the west of the subject property. The, this building is only used for personal residential storage, there's no commercial or business allowed on the site. Given the, the size of the other larger accessory buildings in the area, nine thousand five seventy-four square feet of accessory building area would be congruent with the land composition, according to the lot sizes. Three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. There's already access, the petitioner has a driveway that goes all the way to all of each of the buildings that you saw. No further infrastructure would need to be provided. Four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. No off-street parking is required as a result of strictly residential use of the property, which is only allowed at this site. There's no commercial or business parking. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. There's no offensive nuisances that are permitted at any time. Would be addressed on a complaint basis during the operation of this structure. The use of lighting should be directed downward onto the property in order to prevent direct spillage of light. Six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. The, the proposed accessory building should have no effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The use of the accessory building is for the petitioner's own use and storage, will create few problems to neighboring properties. This property is located within the transition area as identified in the Envision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, which is primarily, is primarily encompassing the area for both the city of Crooks and a combination of Sioux Falls and Crooks, and, which encompasses the area that this is within the subdivision itself. This, this, these areas have a primary purpose of maintaining the rural landscape until eventual development of residential and/or municipal development. In going through, I mentioned this before, it's the same thing, so, goal one of action one point two of the Envision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan recommends utilizing existing and future development policies and regulations in a consistent manner for similarly sided parcels in order to create fair and orderly development. In the future land use plan section of the Envision twenty thirty-five plan, goal one aims to develop a countywide land use pattern that ensures compatibility and functional relationships among jurisdictions and related land use activity. This, this property itself, although inside the transition area, is located outside of all of the incorporated municipal, municipality growth areas, the surrounding area is fully developed, as I mentioned, with a few remaining building eligibilities on that surrounding agricultural property, and is over, over a one-half, one-half mile from the rural service area that's located at the interstate exit of I twenty-nine and two fifty-eighth street. So, the immediate area does not have availability of sanitary sewer with, which, which the present land use composition will likely remain the same, except for the addition of those single-family dwellings with the building eligibilities that are there during the planning period. So, staff finds that the requested total accessory building size is relatively comparable to the existing accessory building sizes in the immediate vicinity. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit seventeen dash forty-one with the following conditions. One, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four square feet. Two, that the accessory building shall not exceed thirty-five feet in height. Three, that the building shall be an accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot. Four, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building, and no commercial uses or storage. and no commercial uses or storage will be allowed at any time. Five, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property. Six, that a building permit is required prior to construction of this accessory building. Um, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
So what is the actual size in addition to then the building here?
Size of the building? Thirty by forty-eight is the proposed building.
That's what I was. It was a little confusing. You had ninety-five hundred and seventy-four square feet and you had the eighty-one thirty-four. I thought might be the difference in the two or something, so. Okay, so thirty by forty-eight, additional building.
So, yeah, that, that is the difference, that thirty by forty-eight.
You have questions, David?
Not yet.
Petitioner here, would you please come forward, state your name and address, please? Petitioner not hanging with us?
Well, then I have, do have a question for.
Yes, you do.
You know, what, uh, they're not gonna use this for commercial purposes, but I saw a sign that said Party Lane. Are they gonna rent this out for action?
I think they're fun-loving people that live there.
Well, let's go.
If they're not here, let's go there.
Because that does usually create a dilemma. We do tend to defer if they are not present. If you have questions.
I guess, again, asking staff, uh, so they knew that it might be pulled off and put on the regular agenda, right?
They got, they got a letter in the mail that says, hold office and send it in there.
I move deferral for a month.
Okay, most for deferral.
I'll second it.
In a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Deferred for thirty days, next meeting.
Yeah, July twenty-fourth.
Okay. Now, what are we up to, item number four?
Item, the next item is item, uh, number s- item number six, which is a rezoning for, um, seventeen oh-one. This is for the property that is, uh, a mile and a half or two miles south of Wall Lake. And, uh, the applicant is still in the process of putting their plan together. I have been discussing this with Eric Willetson, and he assures me that there's going to be a, a number of uses, commercial, multifamily, and residential. But he's working, it's a, an estate property and they're, they're working with all of the property. The heirs put this plan together, so it's taking a little bit of time. He asked that it be continued until, um, until your next meeting, July twenty-fourth.
That's my motion, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Next item.
Next item is a rezoning request seventeen oh-three. This is to rezone, uh, property at the, uh, the Crooks exit. The property is approximately, uh, four acres, I believe. And, um, this is for, uh, it's located south of the Hyman Fire area. This is the map. And, um, the property, uh, is within an area that is developing as an existing light, or light industrial commercially zoned area. The applicant is wanting to rezone the property to, um, light industrial, I- one light industrial. And they, uh, have plans to do some development in there. The, the subject property meets the criteria for the, our, our Invision twenty thirty-five plan and is an expansion of the existing commercially zoned area in the vicinity. Uh, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request, and I can show you a couple of, of pictures. Um, basically, it's just ve- a, a vacant farmland at this point. This is looking south towards Sioux Falls. I'm standing at the, basically at the Hyman, uh, Fire, the parking lot. This is looking to the northwest. This is looking to the northwest. And this is where I was standing, looking at the hu- the large new, um, Hy- Hyman Fire truck facility. This is looking straight to the west, um, Derry Benson's farm. That's it. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions, staff? Thank you. Okay, well, petitioner, I know you're here, so please come forward, state your name and address. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Laura Benson. My address is four six zero three nine, two forty-ninth street, Colton.
Okay, any questions of the petitioner? Okay, we have a quiet group tonight, so no questions, thank you very much. Did you have any questions of the commission I should have asked? Okay. Do we have a motion? Anyone else in the audience care to address this?
Move approval.
A second. For approval in a second, by Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
You, um, uh, failed to indicate at the very beginning that this item will be heard at the August eighth, uh, county commission meeting. So, um, it's a little bit unusual. It's a little, pushed out a little bit further, but there's no meeting next week be, uh, because it's the fourth of July.
Oh, the county commission?
Yeah, county commission. So it's gonna, I won't be able to set the hearing date until the eleventh, which by the time I set the hearing date and we have the hearing, it pushes it out to the eighth of August, so.
So then we move on to our item number eight.
Uh, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Item eight is a zoning text amendment, uh, that has been brought to you a couple of times for just kind of a general review as we've been working on the item at the request of the planning commission. Uh, today, we bring to you before, uh, as a, to move it through the process of a text amendment and to become, uh, part of the, the ordinance. The, this is to add our, to amend CAFO regulations and to add aquaculture, uh, regulations to the revised zoning ordinance for Minnetonka County. So today, I'm gonna present the staff report and some of the major changes to the ordinance as, uh, what we see is major. If there are any questions, I do have available the complete ordinance that we can move through line by line or, or a- as needed. So, uh, we'll go through as, uh, in order of how they appear in the ordinance. So this would be in the agricultural zoning district. Uh, a class D operation was, which is an operation of, uh, less than two hundred and fifty animal units. We'll have some changes that there's gonna be a separation distance, which will be six hundred and sixty feet from any other class D operation. There is gonna be a fifty-foot property setback for the CAFO from any property line. And that it will require, now require a zoning permit to have a class D operation where previously it was just allowed as a, a permitted use, permitted special use without a, um, a zoning permit. Uh, class C existing, this is for existing, excuse me, existing operations that were in existence before, uh, the specific date in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, made some changes to that section. Those changes include, uh, a section about manure application and how, and the additional use regulations just points it off to that direction instead of having it right in the, the agricultural zoning districts. And then it removes the expansion of five hundred animal units as like a maximum expansion, in part because, uh, it is difficult to ex- to tell the extent of what size operations were in nineteen ninety-eight and as they expanded or declined in those years. Uh, you can tell that easy enough from, uh, aerial photography and such, that yes, there was on there. It's continued, but, um, so that now they can just expand up to the maximum of a thousand animal units, as part of this existing CAFO regulation. Then moving on, uh, that was the main changes in the agricultural zoning district. And I guess I can maybe stop for questions there if you have any questions.
Any questions of staff? Yet? Not yet. No, we have seen this a lot of it before, so go ahead.
Uh, then moving on to the CAFO section of the ordinance. This is underneath the additional use regulations. These are some items that have been largely removed from the ordinance. Uh, the geotechnical boring has been removed from the ordinance as that was required above aquifers. And that has been removed and replaced with, uh, requirement to get a state permit if you're above, uh, certain aquifers. Uh, the plans to control pest control, uh, odor control are also removed in part because of difficulties for staff to review such plans and whether or not they would be effective, uh, even once the plans are in existence. Some of the items concerning odor have been redu- have been brought up in the reduction of, of the setbacks later on in the ordinance with the, the addition of requirement for a shelter belt to reduce setbacks. Uh, other items that have been removed, um, nutrient management plan has been removed. This has been re- uh, replaced and removed largely because, uh, facilities are larger than a thousand animal units, have a nutrient management plan that are governed by the state. Uh, and, and they take care of, of what nitrogen and phosphorus is going into the soils and where it needs to be applied. For us as a planning department, what matters most to us would be where it's gonna be in a, or kind of the how. What kind of manure is it? Where's it gonna be stored? Is it gonna be shipped? Is it gonna be moved across neighbors? But for the nutrients itself, it's really tough for us, again, uh, to do that without engineering help or ou- outside help. Then, let's see, liquid manure, that section has been mo- removed and moved, uh, elsewhere in the ordinance. Uh, that we'll see later. Any questions about removed items? All right, so here's some items that have been largely amended from the ordinance. Generally, the flow of the ordinance has been amended to make more clear what is required before a con- uh, a permit is applied for, and then what is required after a conditional use permit is approved. Or before, it was, uh, kind of a mix-up. Uh, some things were required before, some things were after, and they weren't always in the same place in the ordinance. Then, uh, a lot of the setbacks have been re- have been reduced. And that has been, uh, partly because that was part of the reason why it's been brought up to us to review the, the setbacks and how they affect, are affecting the producer uh, in their ability to either expand or, or place a facility in the county. And that the setbacks with the, the enlarging setbacks were hindering development. Items that were largely amended, continued. As I mentioned, as the setbacks were reduced, uh, there, in the previous ordinance, there was, uh, allowance to reduce the setbacks based on management techniques and new technologies. And that was kind, has been previously very vague. Um, where the new ordinance has a proposal to make the re- do setback based on, um, either a waiver or by trees. And the trees would have to be, uh, planted in five rows and be designed by a professional landscape architect as a way to, uh, help reduce and, and mix that air quality, um, and reduce wind to reduce the, the odor potential.
Kevin, just to quickly, aren't there other techniques used to reduce odor? Are they, uh, you know, if they, someone comes in with a different plan, uh?
There are other techniques, uh, and, but they're different for every type of facility.
Okay.
Uh, and the, the trees were chosen as, as a universal technique. Uh, you can plant trees around any type of facility. Whereas if you have a barn or an out- outdoor, uh, setting or a deep pit, those all have different techniques of how to reduce odor.
But so even if you had a deep pit, you'd have to have trees?
Yes.
And, and we're saying we can't reduce it for any, like, if it's, uh, uh, new additives for the pits, for example? Or even just using additives. A lot of people don't unless they're required to.
Sure. A- as of right now, no, the ordinance does not have that.
So when we design pigs that smell like lilac bushes, it won't, that won't help?
Well, we can change the ordinance at that time, I guess. Then there was some minor setback changes for environmental, uh, uh, categories that for both from the CAFO itself and for land applications. Uh, not necessarily the distance, but from what and how the wording is moved with that. Uh, other amended articles is that the notification has been, uh, put more on to the producer. Uh, we have moved the notification section from the additional use regulations to the conditional use permit uh, to have the producer notify everyone a half mile away. And the producer has to notify them via certified mail with return receipt to ensure that everyone is notified. And it comes best from the producer rather than having some mail come in a Minnehaw County letter, so. All right, and then some new items in the ordinance. So, uh, in the ordinance, there's a clear description of when a state permit is needed. In, in the past, it was, uh, just some alluding to a state permit where now it, it has, if you're above an aquifer, you need a permit. If you're above a thousand animals, you need a permit. A- and I can't recall all of them off the top of my head right now, but that, that is clearly spelled out when you need a state permit. Then requirements for construction. Uh, as buildings are getting bigger, uh, engineering is becoming more important for the instruct- construction of buildings. Uh, so when those buildings and when the, the manure containment systems are gonna require engineering, uh, that, that is engineered and brought to our office before a building permit is, is approved. Then there is an addition for, in the past, you could only get a, a waiver from homeowners. Uh, this ordinance proposes another ability of municipalities, uh, the elected body of the municipality to reduce the setback from that municipality. So, um, eh, for example, I'll just pick on Sherman since it's the smallest municipality. If they say, we would let this, this CAFO operate a half mile from our pro- from our facility, uh, they would be able to have their elected body say that, pass a resolution saying that that is okay with them. And then the clarification of manure application requirements. Uh, so in the previous ordinance, there was addressed liquid manure only, uh, where the proposed ordinance has a separation between liquid and non-liquid requirements. Uh, it keeps the setbacks and such, uh, for the manure, uh, s- application. But also requires that a certified crop consultant or engineer provide application for surp- surplus, uh, production of water. So if you have a lagoon and you have lots of water on top, uh, before you were able to apply that based on the, um, uh, planning director's approval, well, now you'll have to get a, a certified crop consultant to approve that before we put that water on. There's been several definition changes, um, to align with the new ordinance, uh, proposal. For example, uh, animal waste has been largely removed and replaced with definitions for manure, uh, being that, uh, the, the animal, the manure is not just thrown away. It is actively used as a, a, a soil amendment and crop nutrients, uh, on the agricultural land. Uh, some of the other changes for, for, say, uh, the calculation of animal units. And this brings the co- the county ordinance in line with the state D E N R, so. Uh, then we move on to other parts of the ordinance. Uh, as noted earlier, the setbacks, or the, excuse me, what's that backs? The notification section, uh, was moved to the conditional use permit section of the ordinance. Uh, the, so that the CAFO producer has to send out notice. Then also, planning commission discussed the one-year expiration date. Uh, then also, planning commission discussed the one-year expiration date for a new permit. Well, we discussed that, that hasn't always been enough time for the producer to get everything else done between, uh, the approval and the, the one-year expiration date. Uh, that has also been the case on a few other conditional use permits that we have issued in the past. Uh, where it becomes, uh, iffy if they can get all the other approval that needs to be done within one year. So, uh, we suggest to extend the permit for all conditional use permits for a two-year, uh, uh, extension, or before it expires, um, and that'll go across all permits, not just CAFOs.
Is this the first mention of, uh, aquaculture that you've gone over today on this? Cause I see it.
Oh, yes. Uh, and I haven't gotten the aquaculture quite yet, but aquaculture would have the same notification qua- requirements as a CAFO. And I got aquaculture coming up in a little bit in the PowerPoint. Oh, I br- I just brought a, or have a slide here for the, that shows the new setbacks. Um, just for example, the, the green dots represent single-family dwellings and the, the setback distance from that single dw- family dwelling. This is the setback for a class D op- operation. Class C operations. Class B operations. And anywhere where there's white, you could, you'd be able to place a CAFO without running into a setback. And then class A. And considering class A does cover most of the map with green, that this does not count the, uh, reduction in setback that is allowed through, with trees, which would bring it closer to this. So.
And Kevin, uh, what about neighboring counties and stuff? We now notify them as well, right Scott?
Uh, if they show you permits that are located within a certain distance, I think it's a half mile, but, uh, let me take that back, it's only the zoning requests that you're required to do that for.
Okay.
But we would, if they were up against the county, we would notify the adjacent property owners if they're within that five hundred feet.
Scott, how about, uh, additional, or the state? Like Minnesota, Iowa?
Uh, we would, if, if they were building, uh, if the, if the site was located next to the state line and we need to notify property owners in the adjacent state, we would, we would get, we would attempt to get the property owner list from that county, from either Rock.
So we, we do presently do notify the other property, okay.
Last month, we had a, a larger building that notified into Iowa, for example. Then we-
A half mile is what you guys do now?
Um, well, five hundred feet, but half mile, I mean, we, there's a number of different setbacks for, um, like gravel pits.
Sure.
There's all, a number of different setback requirements for mailing.
So, um, to aquaculture, um, all of the aquaculture language in the ordinance is new. Uh, to the proposed ordinance. Uh, staff reviewed the, uh, the federal and state regulations before determining, say, the size requirements of the aquaculture. Uh, aquacultures, aquaculture facilities that qualify as small facilities, according to the South Dakota Department of Environment Natural Resources, will be allowed as a permitted special use in the agricultural zoning district. Uh, anything larger than that would require a conditional use permit. Uh, and then aquaculture has been added to, uh, the I-one and I-two industrial zoning districts as a conditional use permit.
That was something we hadn't talked about in the last meetings and we just sort of decided that, why couldn't you put in an industrial district? Like the shrimp producing, the shrimp growers, they're in large buildings and-
Yep.
But we would do it as a conditional use, so everyone would be notified.
And that is where the, the staff report has ended. And if we have specific questions, we can look at the ordinance directly, but.
Any questions of staff?
So do we get, uh, anybody that comes in a half mile, they, you guys will provide the list to them?
Yeah, yeah, we provide that.
So the neighbor would say, "Well, I didn't get it." You can say, "Well, I did give them everybody's name."
Except with the certified.
And with the certified mail, they would have the receipt that says they sent that, yep.
Just like, for like, this was, before the, before, this is for the variants. So I, I have the white slips showing that you mailed them out, so that everyone would be notified or read up the list that we gave you.
That's a significant improvement on what we have been doing. So if their listed address is Las Vegas and their P O box is Las Vegas and they're actually living in Venezuela, what happens?
Well, the, they probably wouldn't sign for it, it would come back.
No kidding, they wouldn't sign for it, but, okay, undeliverable.
It's not that they, we don't have, it's, you know, the downside about doing anything with certified mail is there's always gonna be a segment of the population that are never gonna sign for these because it's always bad news. So you, we do get some of them back.
But at least it's proof that the attempt was made.
They attempted to make it out and that's all the judges, that's all that you can do is you attempt to do a contact them. And with them, you keep the return, we eventually will get that letter back, or the property owner will. But this is the, this is the proof that they mailed it out to them, so.
Any other questions of Kevin or staff?
I may show how dumb I am. This is with the aquaculture. Twenty thousand pounds of cold water fish. How many fish is that?
How many animal units? The animal units are not yet determined.
And, uh, hundred thousand pounds warm water fish, you know, it's just like if I, you over there, what does a thirty thousand pound dairy herd mean to you? Anything?
But they can weigh them, I mean, they, they do them by, they do those, when they harvest them, they know what the weight is.
But I'm just curious, like, about how many would that be?
How many shrimp equal a dairy quail?
Sure, it could be, I'm sure, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands. If it's that tilapia, I mean, they may be five or six pounds each.
The bigger thing is what's, yeah, it's hard to determine, so how big a facility is that, is what you're thinking?
Right, yeah.
There could be just one fish in that three-acre pond. Still, it's any bigger than the absolute half.
Half, right.
It's not like, like any other egg business. Can't afford extra facilities. Any other questions? Mr. Chair, we have a couple civilians here, do they wanna comment?
That's what we're gonna find out.
Okay.
You know, in the audience, care to address this or?
Yeah, this is a public hearing, so.
Interested?
Okay.
Patrick's got advice, I bet.
Seeing none? Who we call for?
I'd kinda like to hear.
Okay, go ahead.
Please.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
No, we need to, that's what we're here for.
We need the input, we do.
Yes. State your name and address, please?
Sure, um, I'm Patrick Andrews, I'm your CCOG rep. I'm Toby's replacement, if you knew Toby. Um, do you want my work address or my home address? Alright, CCOG is located at five hundred Northwestern Avenue, Suite one hundred in Sioux Falls. So, as far as your CAFO regulations go, those seem to be pretty consistent with what the planning districts have discussed at the meeting that's usually held at my office, even though we haven't had that in quite a while. We're trying to implement the same things in our surrounding counties. Specifically, we're working on Turner County right now, which, given South Dakota's five percent of registered voter referendum threshold, that's going to get referred. And Clay County is likely going to get referred as well, so we're oh-for-two. So hopefully you have the-
Like Turner, they're trying to get it referred, huh?
Yep. They're looking to refer it based on the setbacks, which is, sub- their setbacks are substantially lower than every other county. Which, we took the setbacks from the two thousand eight regulations, so, all things being equal, class As, by referring it, they could maybe save themselves three hundred feet. So it's a lot of money being spent on three hundred feet. So, otherwise, aquaculture is something we've discussed. I think I discussed it with Paul directly when he worked for the, the state. And that was, McCook, the Salem area was looking at it as, looking at that. And given the population and everything, they couldn't make it work, so that's where it kinda ended for us, but.
So you're trying to, like, say, you're trying to work with all the counties in the southeast council of governments or whatever to have similar aud- ordinances, ordinances relative to CAFOs? Is what you're attempting to do?
We're trying, cer- certain things are, they know their counties far better than I ever will. So a lot of, that I leave up to them, like setbacks and animal unit numbers and manure application, how much detail they want in there, that's however much they can handle doing. Some of our counties have staff and some have a part-time staff member that does five different things. But, for the most part, we're trying to remove something where they wouldn't have the expertise. Like with the manure application, none of our planning directors, even Toby, think, have, have a good understanding of manure application techniques or the chemistry behind it, or the engineering you need to do on certain things. So, we've kinda taken the approach that they're not experts. So, in order to enforce your manure application setbacks, as long as you know where it is and how much, then that's probably the best they can do. Otherwise, it's heavily on the state to do its job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, one last audience member, if you care to address this, otherwise we'll move on, okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So Scott, uh, procedurally, uh, if we wanna change a word or a comma or something, we can do it now.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it goes forward if we approve it tonight?
That's correct.
The next step is the county commission?
That's correct. So the next step would be, we will prepare a memo and ask the, for permission to have the auditor publish a hearing notice for the, the meeting, which would be the August, well, I mean, not August eighth. It'll be in August sometime. And, uh, then we have a hearing and we present the, the same information to them that we just presented to you with a copy of the draft ordinance and, uh, one showing the markup and one showing the clean ordinance, so they can look at it. And we have a verbal hearing.
And it's just, and it's just the one hearing? I mean, if action is taken, action can be taken.
Well, the, uh, the, first it would be published and then the second reading would be where action was taken.
Okay, okay.
So Scott, or Paul, was it you that had a question about the animal units for laying hens?
No, um.
Who did? Someone was talking chickens to me.
Well, I, I've heard the question before. Uh, I mean, there was a, a large debate in Turner County, uh, on the animal units for laying hens, for a dry manure system. And Moody County, I believe it is, was a point oh-oh-three on there.
Ours is point oh-oh-eight.
Who's this?
Ours is point oh-oh-eight, so it was a, in this ordinance.
Which I really think, by and large, the biggest thing for us is eliminating the graduated setback. When you really get into the larger facilities, that's when setbacks just get completely outrageous and, and ridiculous.
And we can always turn one down and say, "That's just not right for that area and too big," or whatever. Well, I, I'm really happy that we're getting to this point. I would make a motion for us to approve, uh, the planning staff's efforts and to bring it forward to the commission.
We have a second, we have a motion in a second.
I have a couple more comments if I could.
And then we'll, we'll have discussion.
Even, sorry.
Have you got a motion?
Uh.
Okay, it's open for discussion.
If I may, sorry, I didn't realize you were gonna throw a motion in there so fast. Um, one, I was just gonna comment, too, that you guys have done a great job with this, I think. One, one piece of advice I'd have is maybe be prepared to show some of the odor modeling at the commission meeting in case there's more discussion. Just cause the commission hasn't been involved with this for months and months now like we have. Cause I, I can only assume there'll be questions on the setbacks, uh, you know, once again, cause they haven't been discussing it like we have. One thing that I still have a little bit of concern with is saying trees only, if we're gonna consider reductions. Now, if the, if the setbacks stay as they are, I can't imagine us honestly ever really looking seriously at reducing it even further for a project, trees or no trees. I mean, these are, to me, these are good setbacks. But I can't imagine going less than-
An example of that would be, if I put up a dairy barn and I cover my lagoons, that's a whole new ballgame.
Right. I was gonna mention, and biofilters on pig barns, uh, is showing more and more that that really has a big impact. So, and I, and I've seen in a lot of those where projects are approved based on biofilters being put in. Maybe that's not for a redaction, a reduction, but it's justification for approving, period. So, I've still got that concern, I know I've mentioned it a couple times, that, that, are we constraining ourselves if we don't allow room for a little more science in general?
For technology, technologies.
Cause that, that's changing so fast.
Someone brings a new plan and we don't allow it.
Biofilters, digesters on dairies, covered lagoons, that stuff makes a huge difference. I don't, I don't know the right way to word it, I don't know that we need to change it. Again, if the setbacks stay, I, I can't imagine, you know, maybe on a class A, if there was a fair argument, reduce to a half mile maybe or something, but.
Is there anything in the ordinance that specifically, I, I haven't seen it, that says? Cause like I say, the last time we did this was twenty years ago. And so is there anything that says, that allows you to, like you're saying, uh, account for new technology? Is there really anything that says that?
But I think before, the, the original ordinance, that's kind of what we banked, the reduction for the, the Alderson, or Alderman, Alderson.
I mean, we've gone through that and then, you know, the, what, what seems to be always challenged is, um, that word new.
Right.
Because you're saying it's new, but, um, those biofilters have been around, I'm just playing devil's advocate, you're gonna have some-
For a lot of years.
We have those for five years, that's not new.
But they never put them in.
But that's not new, and that's what, and that's what they run to, uh, you know, fight it and quote it with, that's not new.
I can see that.
Yep.
You can say alternate technologies, or you can somehow phrase that, but when you say-
No, that's a very good point, cause those aren't new technology. It'd be additional technology or, what, what was it?
Further developed.
Yeah, uh, advanced technology.
Deployed technology.
Well, and then, well.
I know, it's a tough one.
It's a tough one, because then that puts us as a planning staff into more of an engineering role.
Right.
On whether, and puts you as well, and the county commission.
Right.
Is that really?
You really can't.
Is that technology, I mean, I don't know.
Well, if you have a new technology, you have to go out and sell it to the people around you.
Yeah.
That's really what it is.
And you can get the waiver then.
Yeah, and that's a good point. If you wanna reduce, it's on you to get your neighbors convinced the technology will make all the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, if, if these setbacks, I, i- if, if I have any concern with the setbacks at all, it'd be that eventually we're gonna find ourselves potentially in, in a, in a battle over a quarter mile. Twenty-four hundred head finishing barns, six hundred, or nine hundred and sixty animal units. Quarter mile. There'll, there'll be somebody that can't get their neighbor to understand that that barn actually will be okay at a quarter mile.
See, and I worry about the idea that when it's, has such specificity that, uh, commissioner might say, "Well, it's twenty-one feet too close." Which has happened.
Well, things are gonna change and there, there, there's no getting away from the fact that, uh, the United States now has three hundred and twenty million people in it. And in the next forty years, it's gonna be, you know, three hundred and eighty million. It's just, the, the, the density numbers, despite being a very big country, you're gonna get more and more pressure for development.
I'm gonna have ten chickens and a mule, I'll be okay.
Yeah.
Eventually, you, you're gonna need to adapt, and I think we're adapting because you're gonna have to exist.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree with you, absolutely agree with you. I think it looks great, I just, making the point that we'll have to, uh, that we'll-
And it has been a long process, I mean, you know that we've been working with you since October, November, I'm not sure when we started exactly, and Mike came in the middle of some things.
No, the, the point you made about- No, the, the point you made about selling the new technology to the neighbors instead of us, eh, it's a great point.
That's who asked to do it.
That's, yeah, absolutely, I agree.
I, uh, I guess I would say one other thing, I, I'd like us to, uh, sell to my brothers and sisters on the county commission, uh, which makes it incumbent on us to call them up for coffee or something and, uh, talk about this, because, uh, you know, we did have that twenty-one feet come up one time, and, you know, it could've been just saying, "We approve it with the condition that the, uh, building permit not, uh, move at twenty-one feet," but no, we made them come back a month later, and, uh, we need to-
I always thought our setbacks, though, for the most part, are criteria, they're not set in stone.
Talk to the lawyers.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, talk to the lawyers. Because once you say that it's no longer criteria, it is more-
It was Gene Bender, who's a lawyer, legalistically reading it. And, uh, you know, that's not necessarily wrong, but it's, uh, you know, it's the kinda thing we have to be cognizant of, and, uh, again, I really wish we planning commissioners could work over the, uh, the, uh, the regular commissioners on some of this, because, uh, you know, I, you know, even passing this is not a sure thing. And, uh, you know, in a year, I may not even be here, so.
Assuming it's okay if we come and testify at the commission meeting.
I think Mike brought up a good point, you know, the last time we went through this was twenty years ago, and so I think it's time that it is, I think it's proven that we look at this, and we did, to try and update it, and that's not to say that we don't go through a couple of, of CAFOs and, and see what works and doesn't work, we may wanna come back in two years and tweak something, I mean, we always have that, uh, possibility to do that, too, so.
That looks really good to me. So, sorry to stop in the middle of a motion there.
We have a motion, but we need a second.
I'll say, I think we need a second.
Yeah, I didn't hear you, Mike. Okay, so a motion, a second to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
You know, I think we've ever had a roll call, but, uh-
No, we don't need a roll call, we're alright.
Create order, we need a motion.
Any new business, old business. We're good? Okay, then we see-
Nice work, guys.
Yes, though, oh, I for- I, before, it just clicked in my mind.
I just wanna hear what, the groups, you guys went on that tour last.
Oh, it's great.
I just wanna hear a little bit about that.
Uh, that was on, yeah, May twenty-
I have pictures, it was really good.
Everyone, I think, really, I mean, from the, from the commission, I think they very much appreciated it and, um, it worked out really well, I think it was a huge success.
It was amazing.
Gone out in the county until you get around. It was amazing, the Chemcast Outfitter here at Hartford, we went there.
Yeah, it was really neat.
And then we went up to the Mediation Land while we kinda drove by it.
Yeah, I went to.
Yeah, and then we went to the new, uh, Eastern Farmers Big Fertilizer Farm, oh, that's huge, just really something. And then there's this place like this fruit warehouse or vegetable warehouse in the south side of Del Rapids, never knew there was such a thing.
Or such a business plan.
Yeah, and then, of course, we went to Nordstrom's, courtesy of, which is, you know, that's a huge, interesting stuff. And then we went to Doug's, who was a great host out there, let the commissioner stand beside the lagoon and visit with him, and it was good.
It was a good one, it was good.
It was really good.
I think that it was well received when they're talking that they may like to do that next year again.
We do, we're gonna do it next year.
Yeah, it's amazing, I mean, I'd never been in that Sem Cast building either, and that was-
It was interesting.
Uh, fascinating, and the size of that, uh, agronomy center in Colton is, it reminds me, you see how big that is.
Thank you for reminding me, when we were visiting on the way back, uh, Gene and Cindy both said that we should line up a tour of the dairy down in Southern Lincoln. I wanted Dan Delks.
Dan Delks down there?
I don't, yeah, not necessarily in our county, but I, maybe we could set up another, some other time.
Yeah, we were, we were talking about this stuff a little bit, and, uh, we, we got talking about that one, I just kinda told them the story behind it, and they said, "That's the next thing we need to do is go see that."
Well, Mark, our former, former commissioner, Mark Roben, is, um, or is tied in with Lynn Odwell's, um-
Moody Dairy.
Yeah, I mean, he could take us to the Moody County Dairy, or the Moody County Dairy, or just all that.
And I, and I know they'd be, they'll host anytime down there, too, if, unless you didn't wanna go out of county, but to see a, that's forty-two hundred and fifty, yeah.
Then there's Brian, Brian Hefty's place, yeah, we maybe go on the basketball, shoot some hoops.
See, I wanna thank you guys for, I no longer have a strobe light in my bedroom window out in the Wallic area.
Oh, you got that fixed?
I can't even see a red light over there, I don't know if they shut it all off or what.
It's called a fifty caliber sniper rifle.
Happy birthday again, Scott, go celebrate. What bar are you going to, maybe we'll come have one with you?
We need a motion for adjournment, unless we have something else.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
A lot of time on little bitty things.